Down until you see a green light.
Well, I don't, it's nothing in front.
Okay, well, you're on then. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Aldermen Agenda. The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Alderman Randolph.
Here.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Here.
Alderman Hartman.
Here.
Alderman Runions.
Here.
Alderman Maloney.
Here.
Alderman Rousey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our men and women in harm's way and our public safety employees.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. You may be seated.
The next item on the agenda is the approval. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the agenda for tonight has been approved. The next item up there is the approval of the minutes from the regular session September 13th. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session, September 13, 2022, as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the regular session minutes from September 13th have been approved. The next session is awards, presentation, organizational business. We have recognition for Yard of the Month. We have a proclamation for the National Disability Employment Awareness Month and reappointments. So let's do this. Let's go down to item D, which is the reappointments. Is there a motion for item D, the reappointments to the Tax Increment Financing Commission?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I ask that we ratify reappointments of Michelle Green and Christian Parchman to the Tax Increment Financing Commission for a four-year term that expires 10/22/26.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will reappoint them. They are not here, but we will definitely follow through accordingly. We also have item B, recognition of yards of the month. And Becky, if you would just hop down. None of the yard of the month winners are here, but I want to recognize them. There is Ward One, Yard of the Month, and Ward Two is there, and Ward Three is there. So those are the three Yard of the Month winners. We'll make sure that they receive their gifts and so forth accounted for. The next item is proclamation recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And Ann Hostine is here along with Alderman Hostine. I don't know if he's going to join you or not, but we will proceed. Oh, okay. Fantastic.
Good to see you twice in one day. Twice in one day. It must be amazing.
Whereas October is recognized nationally as the National Disability Employment Awareness Month to commemorate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities to America, workplaces, and economy. And whereas Job One has been leading the effort to champion job choice for people with disabilities in our communities by providing employment opportunities focused on individual needs and talents in both shelter workforce workshop and integrated community environment for 55 years, which is amazing and a blessing at the same time. And whereas during the month of October, Job One encourages our community to reflect on the importance of ensuring that people with disabilities have full access to employment and community involvement. Together, we can make a difference for people with disabilities. And whereas citizens of Grandview benefit greatly from the support and services that Job One and Job One Careers provide to neurodiverse individuals in their community. And whereas Grandview's Job One Week from October 3rd through October 7th will include outreach events throughout the community to increase the community's knowledge and understanding of Job One and its mission. And whereas Job One is the largest and programmatically diverse organization of its kind in the state of Missouri and right here in Grandview. So now therefore, I, Mayor Leonard D. Jones Jr., do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 7th, 2022, as Job One Week in the city of Grandview, Missouri, and congratulate and recognize its founders and staff for their ongoing support to our community diverse employment needs for individuals with disabilities. Signed in the city of Grandview, Missouri, this 27th day of September 2022, and tested by City Clerk Becky Schimble. Thank you and congratulations. I'm going to give this to you. I'm going to let you share with us Job One, whatever you want to. Ann is the vice president. Vice President of Job One, and we have been grateful for all that she has done with Job One and for making sure that Grandview is plugged in with Job One. So, Ann?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Board of Aldermen, as well. This really is a big honor, and we so appreciate the support that you all do give to Job One throughout the year. We couldn't do the work that we do without the community embracing our people that we serve and embracing us and the work that we're doing. So again, I just really appreciate you guys recognizing us, and I will give you this back.
Now, does anyone know what neurodiverse is? Neurodiverse.
The opposite of neurotypical. So most of us in our population are what we consider neurotypical, right? So we go through the world in a way where we communicate in the typical way, or we learn in a typical way, or we interact with our community in a typical way. A person who's neurodiverse has some barrier that causes them to not interact in a typical way. So it's a way to be inclusive of many different types of disabilities and barriers without being specific to diagnosis. So it is some new language that is a change in language, but I think a positive one.
Awesome. So I wanted you all, don't go anywhere, I want you all to understand that. Neurodiverse. Now, I could have said big word, but I didn't say that. I said neurodiverse because that's the pronunciation of the word. So once again, Ann, thank you very much, and the Board of Aldermen would like to thank you as well. Let's give them a round of applause. Job One, 55 years. 55 years. So what a blessing for sure. Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing Alderman Hostine out, you know, at least to come and hang out with us. So thank you. So thank you to staff for taking care of the Yard of the Month winners and making sure that they receive their packets. The next item is public comment. Anyone would like to address the Board of Aldermen, please step up to the mic, state your name and address, and sign in with the city clerk once you finish. We have a three-minute limit for public comment. The time is 7:09, so I declare public comment open. And no one has stepped up, so I declare public comment closed. Today, we have no public hearings. The next item is consent items. So do I hear a motion for consent items E through L?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion to approve consent items E through L as printed and presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So consent items E through L have been approved. The next item is item M, calling for a closed session. Is there a motion?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I make a motion to call a closed session for Tuesday, September 27, 2022, in the mayor's conference room immediately following the regular session at 7:00 PM. The closed session will have closed record and will be scheduled for the purpose of discussing the specific item noted below for which there may be a vote. One, legal actions, causes of action, or litigation in any confidential or privileged communications between the city and/or its representatives and its attorneys.
Thank you, sir, very much. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will have a closed session immediately following our regular session this evening. The next section is ordinances. Is there a motion for bill number 7653?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion that bill number 7653 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Bill number?
Roll call, please.
Bill number 7653. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Grandview Youth Court for youth court services and authorizing payment.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Make a motion that bill number 7653 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Bill number 7653, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Grandview Youth Court for youth court services and authorizing payment.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7653 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I'll second.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7396.
So bill number 7653 has passed. It's now ordinance 7396. Is there a motion for bill number 7654?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7654 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
I second the motion.
Bill number 7654, an ordinance levying general ad valorem property taxes for general debt retirement and park maintenance purposes for the city of Grandview, Missouri, for the 2022 tax levy year.
And Kurt, why don't you go on and give everybody, since we are, you know, live streaming this, just an understanding of what that is?
Right. Yes, tonight, Mayor and Board, you are officially setting the, you're setting the tax levy for the 2023 fiscal year, which is the 2022 tax year. As you saw, we did experience some growth, about a 6% growth in 2022. Primarily, that was new construction and increased valuation of personal property, which is vehicles, motorcycles, and such. And a lot of that is just based on the value of used cars right now. As everybody knows, if you try to buy or sell a used car at the current time, the prices are dramatically inflated. The county, all counties in the state of Missouri are required to use, I believe it's the National Auto Association Dealers of America's number as of October 1 of the previous year for those values. So that's what those values will be for this year. As you can see, the impact of the mill levy, we are basically a flat mill levy as to where we were last year. No change. Next year will be a reassessment year, so we presume that there'll probably be some dramatic increases in assessed valuation, but that will probably end up resulting in a decrease in the mill levy to offset that because of the requirements of the Hancock Amendment.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
Would that bill number 7654 be placed on its second reading?
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Bill number 7654, an ordinance levying general ad valorem property taxes for general debt retirement and park maintenance purposes for the city of Grandview, Missouri, for the 2022 tax levy year.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney, then Alderman Runions.
Jamal, is the county updated? Do they have the most updated correct information when it comes to values?
Alderman Maloney, for the most part, they did. We worked with them for the last three months, and their hands are full because they're going through a transition of their software system. But they've been helping us out with regards to recognizing our new growth. As you realize, cranes are moving around the city, and once they are completely finished, we give them certificate of occupancy. At that moment, we asked Jackson County to recognize the new growth. So we've been working with them parcel by parcel to help us out. For the most part, we're in good shape.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Runions.
I think we attended a meeting, the county assessor and also the collector from Cass County was there last Thursday night, and they were very informative. In case we don't know it, we weren't reassessed this year, but we will be in 2023. And something interesting that they talked about was that, like our hearing on the budget and on the tax, nobody shows up. Nobody shows up in Grandview, most places, nobody shows up to discuss this. Same thing in Cass County. And then when the bill comes out, they said, oh, you know, what happened here? But from what I understood, we can, with Hancock, we have to adjust that anyway. The other thing is, I think Gail said that every house, every piece of property in Jackson County will be, they will physically look at every one of them this year, this upcoming year. And they have to do that between January 1st and June, the end of June, and then it's out of their hands. So it was a very informative, I wish a lot of people would have been there and learned a lot.
Absolutely. Alderman Runions, that's an excellent point. So state law with the Hancock Amendment has a fail-safe. So cities cannot change their levies just because there are a lot to change it. Hancock says it can only go up to the inflation. So with that said, that was, you're absolutely right. It was very informative. I want to make sure that we're very clear about messages. You know, this is a county function, and there's a formula that traps what we can do, what we cannot do.
Good point. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
I don't know who did second.
Just going to do it.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
And that was the second reading?
Yes.
So is there a motion for a final passage?
Mayor.
Alderman Randolph.
I make a motion that bill number 7654 be placed on final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you, sir. And is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7397.
Bill number 7654 has passed. It's now ordinance 7397. Is there a motion on bill number 7655?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7655 be placed on its first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I second that.
Bill number 7655, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 Classification and Compensation Plan and establishing the basis for employee pay raises.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Motion for second reading?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Move that bill number 7655 be placed on its second reading.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Rousey.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Bill number 7655, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2023 Classification and Compensation Plan and establishing the basis for employee pay raises.
Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for final passage?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I move that bill number 7655 be placed on its final passage and said bill be enacted.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I'll second that.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Rousey.
Aye.
Alderman Runions.
Aye.
Alderman Maloney.
Aye.
Alderman Randolph.
Aye.
Ordinance number 7398.
So bill number 7655 has passed. It's now ordinance 7398. The next section is other business, and we have an application for a liquor license change. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Make a motion that we approve the liquor license application change and management agent for the Grandview Memorial VFW Post 8100 submitted by Gerald Caldwell.
Thank you very, very much. Is there a second?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the liquor license managing agent change has been approved. And we've got other business. Let's start on my left. Any other business we have before we go to closed session?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maloney.
Since the VFW Post has been brought up here, just want to remind everybody, there is a breakfast this Saturday, so please, oh, it's next Saturday? Yeah.
Next Saturday. Sorry, thank you very much. Next Saturday. Okay. I'm just trying to get you excited a week early. Yes. Next Saturday. Awesome. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Alderman Runions.
I've got a couple of calls in the last day about some problems at Truman Farm. I think community development has inspected, some inspections up there, but I did get a call from a lady that has a lot of problems with her unit. And then just before I got here tonight, she called me and said that she had submitted her check for rental for the month back in first of this month, and then they called it today and said it had bounced. But then when she called her bank, she said they hadn't bounced anything. So I think there's some stuff going on that maybe we need to start looking at.
Yeah, we're happy to look into that. If you can, after the meeting, give me a little more information as to who this person is and maybe the check number, if you have a copy of it, we'll look into that and make sure.
She just called me en route.
Or, so she called you, okay. Do you have a phone number? I'm happy to have staff give her a call, sort it out.
Okay.
Anyone else on the left? Anyone on the right?
Nope.
Mayor.
Alderwoman Bibbs.
Jamal, I want to thank you for following up on the cleanup.
Absolutely.
For the underneath the Harry Truman Bridge. It looks much better. Thank you.
And I don't want to take the credit. The credit is Doug's. He is right here.
Thank you, Doug.
He is the one who's making that happen alone but our crew.
Thank you.
Couple of things. On October 14th, there is a reentry simulation at the South Patrol Division. So the South Patrol Division is going to have a session there on reentry. So those interested, that's available. You know, thumbs up to staff. The city e-letter newsletter, superb. And I think that's exactly what many of the residents are looking for, just to plug in what are some of the things going on. And I think the way Valerie and Erin have done that is to have links to go to the rest of the information. So I thought, just like Alderman Randolph, I thought that was off the chart and very, very encouraging. So thanks, staff, for doing that. And I think the name of it is pretty, pretty nice, too. Grandview in Touch. And I think that's a good way of being in touch, so thank you for that. I think I mentioned before, President Truman's statue unveiling would be Thursday, and that is going to be there in DC at the Rotunda, and I sent you all information for links. So if you want to watch that or listen to that, that's going to be available to you. So I sent that to everybody as well and sent that to staff, so if you want to post that or pass that around, that's available. Alderman Runions mentioned the Jackson County Assessment Meeting last week. It was a good meeting. It was very productive. Kurt, you were there. Jamal, you were there. Alderman Rousey, you were there. Any, anything else come to mind? I have a couple of notes. Anything else that was noticed? You know, for me? You know, for me?
No, I think it was very informative.
Yeah.
For just the regular taxpayer, kind of how they laid out the process, and the message was for them to, for people to get involved and come to these hearings and participate in the process.
Now, one thing I thought was off the chart, and I think a lot of folks in Grandview don't realize this, but when the real estate guy, I forget his name, when he made the comment that the assessed values in Grandview have gone up 157%.
Yep.
Let me say that again. Over the year, it has gone up 157%. And he said, "The way they evaluate that is not by the whole city, it's by a neighborhood within a school district, and then number of rooms, bedrooms, and bathrooms." That is the evaluation. And he says, "Based on that evaluation, 157% increase assessed value for Grandview." And he says, "Which has far outpaced many other Jackson County properties." And then he finally said, you know, "And some of Cass County." So, I thought that, too, was, you know, we've been hearing a lot from non-real estate agents. It was good to hear a real estate agent, and his comment was an apple-to-apple compare. So, that's the reason they go straight down to the neighborhood and rooms and bathrooms. So, that was eye-opening for me to kind of hear that. So, anything else that jumped out for you guys?
Mayor, it was really also interesting where Cass County was there, too. And their assessor was explaining how their assessments work in some of those special districts and what have you. That was an eye-opener.
Mm-hmm.
I want to be very clear about this 150% comment you made. This will never formalize to a 150% increases in taxes. Again, you are trapped with the inflation. That year inflation is 3%. Your house value can go up 500%. You still see a 3% increase at max. That's the protection for the taxpayers.